...New York City Council, September 15, 2014, order. Honors, please call the roll.
Mr. Bell.
Here.
Mr. Roletta.
Here.
Mr. Blake.
Here.
Mr. Bub.
Here.
Mr. Cos.
Here.
Mrs. Floyd.
Here.
Mr. Guthrie. Ms. Hall.
Here.
Mr. Johnson.
Here.
And Mr. Marmy.
Here. We have nine present this evening. Next on the agenda tonight, we have the invocation by Mr. Floyd, followed by the President of the League, led by Rhonda Limas. Please, Rhonda.
Put you down ahead, please. Almighty God, we thank you that we live in a free country where we can meet together and express our viewpoints and our opinions. We ask that you be with those people this part of the year as flu and illness affect many of our citizens. We ask that you be with us tonight as we deliberate and make decisions that affect the citizens and the city of Newark, and we ask this in your name.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic of America, for whose sake we stand, one nation, united out, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Next on the agenda this evening, we have caucus. That's a time for councilists to debate, and maybe on the agenda tonight, do we have anything? This is what...
As I understood it, here it comes. Never mind.
Anybody like to motion to excuse Mr. Guthrie? We can let him go home.
No, we're letting him go. Okay.
Last chance.
We're good. We're good.
Next, we have amendments of the September 2, 2014 meeting. Is there a motion to a prelude? Motion by Mr. Rat.
Second.
Second by Mr. Johnson. All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Close the same sign. That passes. Thank you. Next, under appointments, Mayor Hall has appointed Phil Plaggett to the City of Newark Board of Zoning Appeals. He is fully in the term of a past member, and his appointment will expire December 31, 2015. I believe we need a voice vote for that. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Close the same sign. That passes. Thank you. Next on the agenda, we have reports of standing committees. Tonight, we have two, one by finance and one by the street committee. Without objection, those will be received and filed. Under reports of city officials, also this evening, we have one by auditor Stephen Johnson and one by Barb Joads, the city tax administrator. Also without objection, those will be received and filed. Under communications, we have 1, 2, 3, 4, 5, 6, 7 of those, two by Chad and Chrissy Hale, one by Paul Moran, one by Daniel Crawford, two by the Ohio Division of Liquor Control, and one by the Ohio EPA. Again, without objections, those will be received and filed. Next on the agenda is one time for citizens' comments. There's two on our agenda this evening. Again, this is not a debate with councils. This is an opportunity for you to come up and let your opinion be heard. Do we have anyone who would like to speak in this first section of citizens' comments? Just raise your hand. Yes, sir. Please come up to the podium and just give us your name and address for the record.
Tom Atha, 95 Ramblin Street, Newark, Ohio. I appreciate the opportunity to speak tonight. I am the president of Downtown New York Association, owner and operator of Work Recording Studio. We're just located just across the street here, and have recently purchased the Crystal Ballroom on Church Street with plans for a multimillion dollar renovation. To say I'm interested in downtown Newark would be an understatement. I am fully invested. I'm here tonight after reading an article in The Advocate this weekend regarding a councilman's position on traffic flow changes downtown. I'd like the opportunity to address two comments made in the article that were greatly misinformed. First, I quote the advocate, "He thinks most residents oppose the idea of removing traffic flights, installing roundabouts, and instituting two-way traffic." He goes on to claim, "There has not been enough public input." As a citizen and a downtown business owner, I'll tell you not what I think, but what I know to be true. Last year, the EPA mandated a sewer separation project for downtown. Our leadership asked the question, "If we are required to tear up the streets, should we put them back the same, or is there room for improvement?" The CIC, a public-private partnership hired by OHM, a consultant in Kehanah, to answer just that question. They were initially hired to design purely aesthetic components such as city entrances, on-street dining, tree and planter choices, but it soon became evident that pedestrian safety and traffic flow were at the utmost concern. The stakeholders of these meetings were primarily property owners, business owners, nonprofit leaders, and city officials. Those who live and breathe downtown Newark, those who would be best informed to speak to the issues at hand, and those who would be impacted the most by change. Having learned that safety was a primary concern, OHM submitted a new quote that would pay for traffic studies and consultation on potential traffic solutions. Following stakeholder input, OHM presented three options with associated study results. Option 1: Replace the existing conditions as they stand. Option 2: State two-way traffic using new signals. Option 3: Implement two roundabouts on East and West Main Street, removing traffic signals altogether. The group was unsatisfied with current conditions, encouraged by recommendations, so requested a fourth option for roundabouts on the four corners of the square. OHM then organized two public meetings to share outcomes. These meetings had overwhelming public support of the proposed traffic design. If someone couldn't make the advertised public meetings, the CIC and Downtown New York Association hold monthly public meetings where ongoing conversation has been provided. I have seen many of the councilmen and women in these meetings and have engaged in fruitful discussion related to this topic, though have yet to meet the councilman, according to the paper. Am I claiming that this project has the approval of 100% of the city? Of course not. I'm sure there will be opposing opinions on the change of this scale, but as it pertains to the 100 businesses engaged in the Downtown New York Association, we're talking more about the kinds of trees and benches we would choose than whether or not we agree with the traffic flow changes because these are decisions we had at hand in making. To a second point that the design will decrease pedestrian safety, I completely disagree. As I said, the result of this design came from public outcry about pedestrian safety. Both OHM and the city have provided impressive supporting evidence about the related improvements this plan will make. To list a few, two-way streets will slow traffic speed as well as roundabouts. Head-on or T-bone crashes will be decreased. Pedestrian crosses will have bump outs and islands. Will be better visually defined and will be shortened in length considerably. As a previous downtown resident, a current downtown business owner, and a future downtown residential landlord, I have no greater concern than my own safety and that of my customers' and tenants. This is what I know because our current administration has worked diligently to include public opinion in this plan and has provided sufficient public meetings to inform the town of progress. What I think is that this plan will make downtown Newark a destination, a place that will attract new businesses, tourists, customers, and a growing population of downtown residents. It will be a catalyst for downtown development, but it's not just what I think. Ask for Verona and Palumbos, Liz Arvau, Steve Lehman, and the 100 downtown businesses and nonprofits that are gearing up for what we believe will be a better public and business environment.
Mr. President. Anyone else for this first section of citizens' comments?
Yes, sir.
I'm Fred Ernest, the executive director of the Downtown Newark Community Investment Corps. I talked to Jeremy Blake today about the article in yesterday's Advocate. Jeremy told me that it would be a great idea if I came down to the city council meeting today and reminded everybody about the Streetscape project and the homework that we did to make our recommendations. The CIC started searching for a Streetscape consultant in August of last year. We contracted with a firm in September of '13 by the name of OHM from Kehanah. OHM is a leading expert in urban design. OHM also has a division that are experts in traffic control flowing design. In choosing a Streetscape design consultant, we put a lot of emphasis on a company that was strong in leading a public meeting to obtain public input and buying them. We thought that was just critical. In doing our due diligence, we found from other communities that OHM's strength is leading town meetings to achieve the best designs and results. OHM led three stakeholder meetings and one public meeting on November 6 of last year. These four meetings brought about public issues of speed and pedestrian safety around the square. This is when we, the CIC, decided that our scope of work was much bigger than Streetscape, and we signed another contract with OHM's traffic division to include the traffic studies and designs. We needed to come up with the best and safest solution for the residents and visitors of Newark. You know, we're going to tear everything up, so let's put it back the right way and do our homework. Over the next six months, we held additional stakeholder meetings and public meetings and performed actual traffic studies. We used the traffic counts to plug into a modeling program to identify the most successful and safest traffic flow patterns. The four optimized intersection scenario with two-way traffic was by far the safest and smoothest design by far. The four mini roundabouts would also benefit Newark in a couple of other ways. It has the lowest annual operating and maintenance cost of any of the other solutions. It also allows flexibility for entertainment by allowing one of the streets to be closed down and the other three can still maintain traffic flow very easily. And that would allow us to, you know, venues like Strawberry and the Riff Fest. To finish, we contracted with OHM because they are experts in urban design and traffic. They reached their recommendations by listening to the public and doing their homework. They also work very closely with us. The recommendations that you were voting on tonight were very well thought out and designed over the last year. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else in this first section? Again, there's one other section after the legislation.
Mr. President.
Mr. Guthrie.
Can I respond to one comment that Mr. Atha made?
Well, he didn't make any by name, but go ahead. I guess we kind of figured that out.
Yeah. The only thing I want to say, Mr. Atha, is I didn't come here tonight to debate this. My vote is going to be no, but I do want to take exception at one point to that. And I am witnesses. I met you. I introduced myself to you at a DNA meeting four or five months ago, and thank you for what you've done for the community. It was at the conclusion of the meeting. I walked up to you and shook hands with you, and thank you for what you've done for the community. So for you to imply that you've never met me or never seen me at a DNA meeting, that's fine, but it's not the facts. Okay? Thank you.
Mr. Guthrie. Next, we have ordinances on the first reading, 14-25.
Ordinance 14-25 by Mr. Johnson, Mrs. Floyd, Mr. Cos, Mr. Marmy, Mr. Rat, and ordinance vacating a portion of Market Street, a portion of a 16-foot, 16-and-a-half-foot wide alley, and a portion of a 24.75-foot wide alley, as shown on the flat of the PM Weddell Edition as recorded in the flat book 2 at page 128 of the Lincoln County Flat Records located south of West Main Street and west of South Fifth Street.
14-25 will be held for a second reading. Next, we have 14-26, also on the first reading.
Ordinance 14-26 by Mr. Johnson, Mrs. Floyd, Mr. Cos, Mr. Marmy, Mr. Rat, and ordinance vacating a portion of a 16-foot wide alley, as shown on the flat of the Wilkins Smith Place Edition as recorded in flat book 4 at page 114 of the Lincoln County Flat Records located between Eighth Street and Central Avenue.
14-26 will be held for a second reading for the next council meeting. Next, we have 14-27, also on the first reading.
Ordinance 14-27 by Mr. Johnson, Mrs. Floyd, Mr. Cos, Mr. Marmy, Mr. Rat, and ordinance vacating a portion of an 11.54-foot wide alley and being part of the Ride Way on the east side of Lot 16 and Warner's allotment in the city of Newark as reported in flat book 5, page 10 of the Lincoln County Flat Records located north of Dickerson Street.
14-27 will also be held for a second reading at the next council meeting. Next, we have resolutions on a second reading, 14-69.
Resolution 14-69 by Mr. Blake, Mr. Marmy, Mr. Cos, Mrs. Floyd, Mr. Rat, a resolution authorizing and directing the Director of Public Service to set bids and shell certain surplus personal property now owned by the city of Newark, Ohio, and declaring that such property is no longer needed for any municipal purpose.
You've heard the second reading, 14-69. What is your wish?
Mr. President. Mr. Cos. I'd like to make a motion to approve Resolution 14-69.
Motion to adopt by Mr. Cos.
Second.
Second by Mrs. Floyd. Is there any discussion on 14-69? Seeing none, honors, call a roll vote.
Mr. Rat.
Yes.
Mr. Roletta.
Yes.
Mr. Blake.
Yes.
Mr. Bub.
Yes.
Mr. Cos.
Yes.
Mrs. Floyd.
Yes.
Mr. Guthrie.
Yes.
Ms. Hall.
Yes.
Mr. Johnson.
Yes.
And Mr. Marmy.
Yes.
14-69 has passed, 10-0. Next, we have on a second reading, 14-70.
Resolution 14-70 by Mr. Blake, Mr. Marmy, Mr. Cos, Mrs. Floyd, Mr. Rat, a resolution appropriating monies for the current expenses of the municipal corporation.
You've heard the second reading of 14-70. What is your wish?
Motion to adopt.
Ms. Hall? Ms. Hall moves to adopt. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mrs. Floyd. Is there any discussion on 14-70? Seeing none, honors, please call a roll vote.
Mr. Rat.
Yes.
Mr. Roletta.
Yes.
Mr. Blake.
Yes.
Mr. Bub.
Yes.
Mr. Cos.
Yes.
Mrs. Floyd.
Yes.
Mr. Guthrie.
Yes.
Ms. Hall.
Yes.
Mr. Johnson.
Yes.
And Mr. Marmy.
Yes.
14-70 has passed, 10-0. Next, on a second reading, we have 14-72.
Resolution 14-72 by Mr. Blake, Mr. Marmy, Mr. Cos, Mrs. Floyd, Mr. Rat, a resolution authorizing and directing the Director of Public Service of the city of Newark, Ohio, to advertise for bids and enter into contract subject to the appropriation of funds for construction of the downtown renovation project.
You've heard the second reading of 14-72. What is your wish?
Mr. President. Mr. Cos. Make a motion to approve 14-70.
Motion to adopt by Mr. Cos. Second by Mr. Johnson. Is there any discussion on 14-72? Okay. Seeing none, honors, please call a roll vote.
Mr. Rat.
Yes.
Mr. Roletta.
No.
Mr. Blake.
Yes.
Mr. Bub.
Yes.
Mr. Cos.
Yes.
Mrs. Floyd.
Yes.
Mr. Guthrie.
No.
Ms. Hall.
Yes.
Mr. Johnson.
Yes.
And Mr. Marmy.
No.
14-72 passes 7 to 3. Next, we have a second reading, 14-73.
Resolution 14-73 by Mr. Blake, Mr. Marmy, Mr. Cos, Mrs. Floyd, Mr. Rat, a resolution authorizing and directing the mayor of the city of Newark to prepare and submit applications to the Ohio Department of Public Safety for fiscal year 2014 Edward Byrne Justice Assistant Grant Funding.
You've heard the second reading of 14-73. What is your wish?
Mr. President. Mr. Blake. Move to adopt 14-73.
Motion by Mr. Blake, second by Mrs. Floyd. Do we have any discussion on 14-73? Quiet group. Honors, please call a roll vote.
Mr. Rat.
Yes.
Mr. Roletta.
Yes.
Mr. Blake.
Yes.
Mr. Bub.
Yes.
Mr. Cos.
Yes.
Mrs. Floyd.
Yes.
Mr. Guthrie.
Yes.
Ms. Hall.
Yes.
Mr. Johnson.
Yes.
And Mr. Marmy.
Yes.
14-73 passes 10-0. Next, on the second reading, we have 14-74.
Resolution 14-74 by Mr. Blake, Mr. Marmy, Mr. Cos, Mrs. Floyd, Mr. Rat, a resolution authorizing the Director of Public Service to repair and submit applications to participate in the Ohio Public Works Commission State Capital Improvements Program and to execute contracts as required.
You've heard the second reading of 14-74. What is your wish?
Mr. President. Mr. Blake. Move to adopt 14-74.
Motion by Mr. Blake.
Second.
Second by Mrs. Floyd. Is there any discussion for anyone on 14-74? Seeing none, honors, please call a roll vote.
Mr. Rat.
Yes.
Mr. Roletta.
Yes.
Mr. Blake.
Yes.
Mr. Bub.
Yes.
Mr. Cos.
Yes.
Mrs. Floyd.
Yes.
Mr. Guthrie.
Yes.
Ms. Hall.
Yes.
Mr. Johnson.
Yes.
Mr. Marmy.
Yes.
14-74 passes 10-0. Next, we go back to resolutions on the first reading, 14-71.
Resolution 14-71 by Mrs. Floyd, Mr. Cos, Mr. Marmy, and Mr. Rat, a resolution appropriating monies for current expenses of municipal corporation.
Mr. President.
Mrs. Floyd.
I'd like to make a motion to waive the two-day on this, President.
Motion by Mrs. Floyd to waive the two-day reading rule.
Second.
Second by Mr. Marmy. Mrs. Floyd.
There are several payouts here, and I checked with the auditor and the other things they need to expedite.
Thank you, Mrs. Floyd. Honors, please call a roll vote. Waive the two-day reading rule on 14-74.
Mr. Rat.
Yes.
Mr. Roletta.
Yes.
Mr. Blake.
No.
Mr. Bub.
Yes.
Mr. Cos.
Yes.
Mrs. Floyd.
Yes.
Mr. Guthrie.
No.
Ms. Hall.
Yes.
Mr. Johnson.
Yes.
And Mr. Marmy.
Yes.
The two-day reading rules waived, Mrs. Floyd.
I'd like to make a motion to adopt Resolution 14-71.
Second.
Motion by Mrs. Floyd, second by Mr. Marmy to adopt 14-71. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, honors, please call a roll vote.
Mr. Rat.
Yes.
Mr. Roletta.
Yes.
Mr. Blake.
Yes.
Mr. Bub.
Yes.
Mr. Cos.
Yes.
Mrs. Floyd.
Yes.
Mr. Guthrie.
No.
Ms. Hall.
Yes.
Mr. Johnson.
Yes.
And Mr. Marmy.
Yes.
14-71 passes 9-1. Next, we have 14-74, the resolutions on the first reading. 14-75, I'm sorry.
Resolution 14-75 by Mr. Blake, Mr. Cos, Mrs. Floyd, Mr. Marmy, Mr. Rat, a resolution authorizing and directing the mayor of the city of Newark to prepare and submit to the United States Department of Housing and Urban Development a five-year consolidated plan and a one-year use of funds action plan along with an application for fiscal year 2015 federal community development block grant funds as required by 24 CSR Part 91.220 for various programs related to housing and community development.
14-75 will be held for a second reading. Finally, seeing we have 14-76.
Resolution 14-76 by Mr. Blake, Mrs. Floyd, Mr. Cos, Mr. Marmy, Mr. Rat, a resolution appropriating monies for current expenses of municipal corporation.
14-76 will be held for a second reading. And that's it for the legislation tonight. Thank you for your attendance. Next on the agenda this evening, we have a second section for comments from citizens. Do we have anyone who would like to speak? Yes.
I know it's too late, but you get not bad, Blake. Don't let nobody talk to you. Oh, Tim Wall, 167 South Fifth Street. Let them talk to you. But they are not bad, Blake. How we gonna stand up? You can't talk to the council, Mr. Smith. You've got to citizen comments. Where's this coming? You know, the roundabouts run downtown. You know, 35 years ago, 40 years ago, people coming in here, they say they want to fix the city up, they want to put new street lamps up, they want to do these pretty little curb things and then take out these curb things out. Downtown is bad. Downtown is dead. How come you think the hotel gang have been stolen four times in the last 10 years? Now they got more facelifts than Martin Doakes does. The Crystal Ball, how many times have they been robbed? Been overdone. Even on state count people, as Eva said, 20 years ago, 15 years ago, that downtown will never be a destination. So now, how much money you stick into it? Roundabout is going to be one that downfall for a city and look. I know it's too late now to say it, but okay, that's one number one. Number two, on all this page, I had a bunch of stuff going on my backyard again. Play, nothing new, but let yourself in. Play, that happened all the time. I had to carry cameras. I caught the person who did it. I know who did it. I call, I hear like good, says, says, did, call police, hadn't come down on Sunday. The day it happened, I had to go to hospital three days later. Okay. I got the video. I gave it to the cops. I gave it to him. He said he gonna go down, you know, do all the paperwork he gave us. I told this guy who he was, where he lived at, showed him the video camera, two cameras, told him where he sold his daddy, and everything all he had to do to pick him up. I went down to the physical for my dad and wondered what was going on. Oh, what might think about he didn't make a picture report? That's the first time a police officer made a picture report in like 20 years for my place. And it is not being nothing done. This guy thrown around, used my daddy's and my table that he stole out of my backyard and cut neighbors' backs with it. I even tore away his roof down behind my house, a blue-hand t-shirt. But no, ain't it happening? He's gonna help me down the street that night. I actually caught him not before that, while Saturday night, stealing out of a car down here on Third Street where he lived. It wasn't his car, but he still on the street. Cool reason this people in this city don't call my law anymore. Cool reason people don't got no trust in this city or police department for being like that. They don't do nothing. They sent out the one level man at night time, there was seven police cruisers just sitting out there with lights blazing and just setting on a third of car on police cruiser. They should be out there with children or the calles, not sitting out here watching the hookers or trying to pick up drunk or something like that. They should be out with children. Seven, it was six cruisers out there, just sitting there watching the people while people out there stealing stuff out of me on dayways. And you know, that's the reason why people don't like to come downtown anymore. But it's just dead. And it's so corrupt. Why do I want it corrupt? Well, maybe that just says corrupting. Thank you.
Do you have a date on that police report?
Yeah. I got for 8/3/14.
Okay. All right, Mr. Spurgeon, check that out. You can go call him, or I will call him.
Well, they were supposed to call me long time ago.
Anyone else to see any citizen comments? Mr. Rango?
Thank you. Paul Moran, City of North Forest Street. Has some items here with addresses. This coming, the Veterans Day will be the sixtieth anniversary of that holiday that we recognize all our veterans. I'm asking that the city would put up thanking banners and bunting in front of the City Hall Building and at the gazebo in commemoration, and it would show the gratitude for our veterans all those many years. Next, I want to bring up a lot of the businesses that the city's had. North Leftwood Pedding, Southern Fair Out, T-shirt Design, Don Cooz Pizza, Bakery over here on Third Street, North Family Shoes, they will be closed in there shortly as well. Who's next, I don't know. And this, yeah, I know if I see, look around, the food pantries and the free church dinners, the crowds are getting bigger and bigger and bigger. I mean, the unemployment's got to be high in the city. And I wish to figure it would be made public, like in the paper, on radio, because I had no idea what the unemployment rate is within the city. And we all know about the county, but not the city itself. And I'd like to make sure that it be made public by somebody. And if you go over on Church Street here, you see Riley Bakery, or down the road, Counter Cleaners Building's been empty for years. I mean, there's a lot of good uses for that building, Counter Cleaners. I don't understand why it's been empty for so many years. There's a lot of good possibilities there. And the city keeps using loans, bonds, and for this and that. I'm wondering how long those city can keep, get by on that aspect, on loans and bonds. I mean, how long can we keep doing that before it gets cut off? That's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. President. Anyone else to see here?
Jimmy Moore, Six Forty-seven Evans Street. Couple things. One thing, Computer Recycling Event's coming up in October, third and fourth, Friday and Saturday, from nine until four. It'll be held on Oakwood Avenue, south end of Contour Farming, like we've always had it. We accept all, almost everything that's electronic, but no TVs. So printers, batteries, whatever, cell phones. And the other night, we had a block watch meeting on the Hudson Avenue area. I was very surprised, one of the local businesses brought a counterfeit ten-dollar bill in, and there is no way I think I could notice that that was counterfeit. And he's telling me that other bills, they bleach out five-dollar bills and print fifty dollars on them, so those pens don't even work, let's say they're counterfeit. It is amazing. If they, if the people would do that, if they would put that into their work ethic, they would make a million dollars someplace else. But we've got a lot of criminals out there. He's saying that he's getting a lot of them, and there's a lot of them in other areas of our block watch area. So I'm sure the whole city, county, is just going crazy with counterfeit bills, so be on the lookout. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else for this last section of citizen's comments? Anyone from the administration? Our honor, Mr. Johnson?
I'll pass.
Mark Walrath?
I'll pass.
Next on miscellaneous, Mr. Rapp?
Thanks. As I don't regard to guess to, I forget what the number is. Fourteen seventy-two with the revitalization of downtown. Speaking from somebody who's been to almost all of the public meetings, most of the CIC meetings, continues to go to the monthly public CIC meetings. I'm real excited that that passed tonight. I'm a huge supporter of it. I'm excited about the growth that's going on downtown. The liveliest place I've ever seen in my life. A lot of money and people that are investing into the downtown. And I'm not talking about us, the government, I'm talking about five individuals investing their own hard-earned money into the downtown area. They must see something that some others don't see, because they're investing an awful lot of money down there and an awful lot of time and effort, risking their livelihoods, risking their famous fortune. And I'm excited about it, and I think it's going to be a great thing, and I look forward to that. So I'm glad that passed. Mr. Amor, there is a way that you can detect those counterfeit bills by using a blacklight. There's a strip in them, and they're different. If you want more information on that, I can give it to you, but you can't change, yeah, you can kind of hold it up in the light. I can see the strip even without the blacklight, but you can't change, you can't move that strip, is what I'm saying. It's a different position for every different combination. And I'm going to tell you more about that if you're interested.
Grabs, Mr. Roletta?
Thank you, Mr. President. Just to clarify my vote on fourteen seventy-two, I am in support of the sewer separation project. However, the public input I received from residents in my ward was almost entirely negative regarding the roundabouts and the change of traffic.
That'll pass. Thank you. Mr. Roletta, Mr. Blake?
Mr. President, I just want to remind folks that this Thursday will be our first meeting of the North Youth Council. We'll be having fourteen teenagers from six different institutions sitting amongst these chairs here on Thursday. Judge Stacey Berry is going to come and give a little vote of office to each of the, each of the teenagers, and they're going to select their officers, and they're going to begin the school year. And so Thursday at four o'clock here in Council Chambers will be the first meeting with our student leaders. Then I'll call a finance committee meeting for September twentieth.
Thank you, Mr. Rapp.
Thank you, Mr. President. Three items this evening. One to remind everybody, the United Way Parade this Sunday, too, starts at the Evans Complex, goes down Country Club, and ends at the campus, so hope to see fellow council members there. October fifth, twelve-thirty, in Courthouse Square, gazebo, the dedication of the J. Barker Carolan System will occur that day, the state yard system in the courthouse. And third item, I'd like to recognize happening, it's occurring at the Trout Club. Ownership is transferred a few weeks ago. If you haven't been by there, you drive up by there, it's getting a complete facelift. It looks sort of really nice, and it's nice to see a venue that was erected in nineteen sixty-three coming back to life with the golf and restaurant venues. So with that, I'll pass. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Rapp. Mr. Cox, please pass. Mr. Cox, Mrs. Floyd?
I too, I'm excited it up. Like, thanks for going downtown. I've seen lots of progress. I go to the Downtown New Association meeting almost every month, and I think most of them are in downtown, and really excited about what's going on. I want to mention, there's a block watch meeting at Woodside Presbyterian next Sunday, September twenty-first at five o'clock. I know that they've had some serious problems. You saw them in the paper about the high school students at Woods and Eleventh Street area when they get out of school in the afternoon. I'm sure that will be a major topic of discussion. And finally, I volunteered for several things, and I managed to get on the marketing committee for the Week of Caring, which is the United Way next week. It's always been a Day of Caring, next week it's a Week of Caring. And one of the things that they want to do this year is they want to collect items that they can use within the community. So on Monday, there's going to be a truck sitting over by the gazebo, and on Monday, they're asking people to bring by books that can be used for children, infants to teens, and baby items. On Tuesday, they're looking for toiletries. On Wednesday, they're looking for things for animals, and on Thursday, they're looking for kids' coats and footed sweatshirts and that sort of thing. They're asking for some people. I was directly asked if I could ask council members, so I've already approached a couple, to be at the truck. They need somebody there with the key, and they're going to do it during drive times. I'm going to be there in the mornings from seven to nine, but I need two or three more people from three to six in the afternoon. So if you're available, let me know, or I may hit some people from the Downtown Newark Association, because they need to be close by. But, okay, and with that, I have.
Thank you, Mrs. Floyd. Mr. Guthrie?
Thank you, Mr. President. President, first, I want to thank the folks who have prayed for my granddaughter. She came home from Children's Hospital, actually today for the second time, and she's got a long way ahead of her, but she's going to make it. She's tough. She's two years old, but she's tough. I wanted to say a few words. First, I do want to reiterate to Mr. Athie what I said to him when I met him at the DNA meeting, and that is that I appreciate everything he is doing for our downtown and others. I think there are some exciting things going on downtown. Little did I know that answering a question was going to generate so much interest. There haven't been many people voting with me on issues lately, so I didn't think I'd get too worked up about it. But I did want to make a couple of comments. First, I go a long way back with this downtown, and I care very much about it, and I do believe that it has a future, a good future. And the, I can remember, remember the day I asked to meet with Dave Longberg, and when I was a county commissioner, and we had lunch at the Matona, and as a result of that lunch, he bought the Auditorium Theater and he bought the Midland Theater. And so I really, I don't in any way feel I need to apologize for my commitment to downtown because it goes back thirty, thirty-five years. I've said many times, I think we ought to have a public square commission. Mentioned that to the mayor early on when I came back on council and he came on as our new mayor. I do want to say that the comments that there's been overwhelming public input, and by the way, I did attend two of those meetings, too. And yes, were there people, a good number of people in tents of this meeting, yes, there were. But those meetings use what I always refer to as the ODOT model of getting public input, and that is, you know, we explain the project, and at the conclusion of the explanation, then people go around and talk to consultants and other folks about the project. To me, as members of city council, as the people that are elected to represent the people of this city, we have an obligation to do a better job vetting. That is one council member's opinion, because we just voted on this project. And so I don't take exception to anything anybody's doing for downtown. I don't take exception to how anybody else votes on this, but I did want to make it very clear that I'm a big supporter of this downtown. I'm sure that the end result of this project's going to be a very attractive downtown. But I will tell you that I have serious concerns about pedestrian safety with roundabouts. And I have had lots of input in the last month or two about the issue of pedestrian safety, including within the last week. I know the disabilities community has concerns about roundabouts, and I just, I'm just real hopeful that we can address all those concerns. And, you know, one guy called me today, one of our residents, said to me, if you think you've got pedestrian safety problems, now you wait until you see what you're going to have with roundabouts. And he said that he has used roundabouts all over this country. So anyhow, I'm just one person, and I'm stating one single opinion, and I appreciate everybody else's opinions here on this subject. Thank you.
Mr. Guthrie, this call?
Thank you all, thanks.
Mr. Johnson?
I'll pass.
Mr. Johnson and Mr. Marmy?
Thank you, Mr. President. The first thing I want to mention, and I don't know, Mr. Guthrie, your vote on the financial and the reason for the no, but anytime there's a financial and if there's one aspect that a council member disagrees with, we should split that out, so that they're not voting against the entire thing if it's just one item. And I'm always in support of that, and we should always honor that. So if there is ever anything in the future for anyone that you just have an issue with one of the items, we should split that out for that council member to vote no on that, so then it doesn't appear as if they're voting no on the entire piece of legislation. So I just wanted to reiterate that. My vote on the, I guess, if you want to call it roundabouts, that's what everybody's kind of labeling it, but I'm just, my vote no was basically a financial decision. I think that we need to kind of look at financially what is the best thing as far as our dollars towards any kind of projects. I don't think that we should spend additional funds at this point when we're asking taxpayers actually to increase taxes in order to pay for street paving and other types of issues. I realize and recognize that there are possibly some private funds going into this. However, anytime the taxpayer dollars are going to be utilized when it comes to any kind of paving or road improvements or anything, when we're asking our taxpayers to pay more, we should make sure that we're very frugal with our money, and at this point, I just don't think we have the funds that we should be making that decision right now. And then finally, comments about the bleaching. My business was definitely hit by counterfeit fifty-dollar bill. In my business, if that happens, it's just out of my pocket. And the holograms, you can look up in a fluorescent light with it, and you got to match the faces, and that's what we do. We threw away our pens. The pens are no good anymore, because they are, they're just bleaching old dollars and using the same paper. But the holograms and the watermarks and everything, those are things that businesses do need to be aware of, and I actually went to a seminar, kind of train, and then I trained my team on it. It is something that it's a shame that people are doing it, and like you said, if they spent those efforts towards other things, they probably would amount to something. And I also want to comment on the Trout Club. It's great news. It was very scary, the thoughts out in my neighborhood, because that's where I reside, that that was going to be a vacant property and just start to overgrow. I've seen golf courses when they go under and they get overgrown, and it's not a pretty sight compared to what it is now. Not only that, the Trout Club has a huge tradition within this community, the history of it. It used to be the place for a lot of individuals in Columbus that would come over, and that was the place to go. Granted, I don't know who ever came up with the concept of raising trout when you're putting pesticides on the golf course, but I don't think that was really thought of back then. But it is a great venue. It is a beautiful place. There's class reunions, weddings, and I'm very grateful that it has new ownership, and I hope that folks really do take advantage of it and go out there and eat dinner or something, golf, swim, but it is a great thing. With that, I pass.
Thank you, Mr. Marmy. This is a more book evening. This is a five-monded month, so there's no meeting September twenty-seventh, which is next Monday. Our next committee meeting is September twenty-ninth at five-thirty here in this room. Our next council meeting is October sixth at seven o'clock. Mr. Walden, you've been at enough of these meetings, you know, city council meetings, there's two places to speak, it's citizen's comments. This is not a free-for-all, you know that, so I don't think I have to say anything else. If I'd heard what you said on the way back there, you probably were watching the rest of it from the outside. So our motion to adjourn, vote through. Motion by Mr. Rapp, second by Mr. Cox, all his favorites, signify by saying aye.
Aye.